I just realized I don't have mine either. I said, "I don't have mine either." I stuck it in here, but I must've when I pulled papers out.
Which one is?
This is the old one.
This is the old one here. Yeah, the new one would be on yellow.
It's all right. It's still pretty good. Right. Yeah. All right, at this time, I'm going to call Finance Committee to order. Mr. Erickson is not able to be here tonight. We have one item on the agenda, which is another 2014 budget reappraisal. Ms. Genova.
What you have before you is a request for a budget reappraisal, and this came out of Bureau of Services. Mr. Howard had worked with Commissioner Olson. I believe that Jeremy Howard is unavailable to be with us tonight, so I will just walk you through from a financial perspective. Basically, this is just a change in where an individual is budgeted. Moving someone from the pool maintenance department wherein they work as a maintenance worker, moving that fill into the parks department as a motor equipment operator, MEO medium. Mr. Olson and Mr. Howard feel that that would be more appropriate. And as you see, we're moving per diem overtime as well as out-of-grade pay. And there is no net effect to the budget one way or the other, just moving staff into one area from the other.
Questions, Ms. Parrazo.
And going forward, there won't be any effect on the budget either, like for 2015?
This is a permanent change.
But I'm saying it won't have any effect on the bottom line of the budget in the following year.
In the following year, assuming the Bureau of Services keeps this individual the way it is, there should be no change. There's no change inherent in what we've got going to go forward, but I'm not sure specifically if they'd be doing anything different in parks or pools for 2015. I can't say that.
But if everything stays the same?
Exactly.
And then, I'm sorry, the position?
It's a...
Is getting, are we taking the position out of the budget, or will it remain on the...
We're taking a position from one area and putting it into another.
Okay, so it's the same position, same, I mean, it's different, but it's the same. We have one FTE slot, and that slot's getting moved from one side to the other.
Right, and the same type of work is going to be done, but the title is changing. But it's one person moving to another spot.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not, I have a question. So how does, maybe Mr. Olson would have been here for this. What effect does it have on, I understand that they're taking them to MEO. So how does that affect this maintenance job in terms of, I know that it's moving. So how does that particular work get done, I guess is what I'm asking.
My discussions with Mr. Howard is that the same, the function of the pool maintenance worker is going to be supported out of the parks department, and that individual will be an MEO medium. And then, when they have to do anything that requires certification for the pool, that's the reason why we're moving the out-of-grade pay, and you see the per diem overtime being moved. So the function is going to be handled just as it is now. It's just going to come out of parks rather than...
Anything else? No, I'll entertain a motion to move it?
Second.
Okay, you move it. I'll second it.
Motion to move it.
Yep, okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, then I'd like to call City Development and Planning to order. Actually, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn Finance.
Fine.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I will now call City Development and Planning to order. First item on the agenda is just a discussion about the Affirmative Action Advisory Board. Ms. Portfield has indicated her interest in kind of taking leadership with that. We received from Miriam Cajusti some suggestions of possibly slight changes to the composition of this board. I know also Mr. Falatiko had expressed an interest in serving on the board, you know, with his legal background. So I just thought this would be a good time to just kind of have some general discussions about it. Mary, do you want to?
Well, actually, I looked over what the original legislation was, and then the suggestions for changes.
Did you bring those by any chance?
No, do you need them?
Yeah. I'm going to have him just get copies of those, the changes.
Okay.
Yeah, but go ahead.
But I noticed that the suggestions for changes actually lessens the number of board members. So I thought Ms. Cajusti would be here to, because she suggested those changes. So I really wanted to know why the lowering the number of individuals on the board, if there was a particular reason behind that.
Okay, and that's probably my fault. I should have let her know we were going to be talking about this tonight, and I neglected to do that. Okay, yes.
Just a guess, that I know the Police Review Board had such a hard time getting a quorum because of the number of members, that we reduced that so we could more effectively get it more. That may be what her thinking is, but I can't speak to her. It's just if you don't have people show up and then they can't do the work because there's not enough voting party, I don't...
And that is so true. I mean, it's hard to get a quorum when you have so large a number of members.
Mr. Ege.
Maybe, I don't know how the makeup of the board is. It could be different ethnic groups are represented, so there could be good reason to have almost, I don't know. I think we need Mary in here.
I agree with that.
Because we want to make sure everybody's represented.
There's numerous members, though. There's two representing women, one representing...
No, they lowered that number.
Well, right, I'm saying in the original board.
Right.
So I would assume that there would still be one person in each division, but, well, Mary.
Yeah, and our clerk is making copies of that, so everybody can have it to look at. And did you have any, at this point, you have some thoughts of people, or should, do we want to be asking people?
I think what we should, yes, I have some thoughts of people, people who actually have background in affirmative action and done this work before. But I think we first of all have to all agree on what the makeup is going to be, and then start, you know, everyone could, just like we did with other boards, ask people they think that might be, that meet the specific qualifications, and ask people that might be interested in serving. And I hear the different conversations regarding, you know, why the numbers may have been changed. But one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that for four years, we didn't have any improvement in our affirmative action and the number of minorities and disabled persons and women that were hired. So I think that we should, I think a lot of people, first of all, would be interested in this, and that we should try first with a higher number. And if we can't get the higher number, then we could step back as opposed to starting with a lower number.
All right, well, I'll make sure we invite her to the next meeting, too, so that we can carry on the conversation. Okay, second item is a resolution recognizing American Heart Health Month. Okay, is this a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, just a reminder here that we will have Ellis Hospital joining us at our Monday meeting, again, focusing on the economic strengths. Paul Milton, who's the Executive Vice President and Chief Operations Officer, would be here to do the, about approximately 10-minute presentation. And I guess we point out here that our hospitals employ 5.3 million people, so it's really the second-largest sector of private sector employment. So we think they have them here.
Do you need a resolution for that?
No, no, that's just going to be a presentation right at the start of the meeting, like when we had Philip Morris. Okay, we do want to do a resolution recognizing Phi Beta Phi. Ms. Parrazo, do you want to talk to that a little bit?
Yep, they're actually going to be presenting a tremendous number of books to the county programs, I believe 500 total books. And their focus of service has been literacy. So they would like to come and present the books at a council meeting, which would be lovely, certainly. And just in addition, to have a resolution to honor their service, and they've been doing it for more than 100 years, so.
Yes, definitely. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I think we're ready to move forward with the city council appointment, appointing Mr. Kozier. I believe that we would make the appointment effective March 3rd. Is that correct?
Yes.
So he can wrap up a couple of the other things that he's, you know, still involved with. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to make that appointment.
I will move it.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And one announcement. The city crews began snow removal today. They mostly were focusing on island tips at intersections. Tomorrow, they're going to move into the Stockade neighborhood. So people should just start paying attention to the signs, the no-parking signs, because we're going to have them a lot of places in the city, I think, before we're done. So, and I also just want to commend our folks for the work they do. I mean, no, not every street is wonderful at this point just because of the volume of snow, but I'm sure these folks have been working lots of hours to get us to where we are now. So we thank them. And if there's nothing else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call to order government operations. We have a call for public hearing, Chapter 255 of the City Code regarding water meters. Mr. Holster.
If you were to look at the code right now, it requires that the water meters, which are needed on approximately 1,500 properties, meaning mostly commercial properties, are to be installed by city personnel. As you are aware from considerations concerning this year's budget, we want to switch to new meters. And the new meters are ones that are going to be readable electronically. So a truck can just drive by, and they'll be pinging off transpondy with the meter. Or there is a possibility that it could be with a tower that would be centrally located someplace within the city. Right now, the information that I have from Paul LeFond is it will most likely be one with a truck driving by. But be that as it may, we're going to want to replace the meters that are in the city. And what we're doing is making it so that the meters can be replaced by either the city personnel or authorized agents. And there are a couple of things to update the rates with the CPI and so on that are in there. But basically, it's so that the city, if it determines that it needs to, can retain the services of a plumber to put the water meters in or to assist in putting water meters in. As I said, going to be like 1,500 of them, and that's going to be more than the city personnel will be able to handle.
And this is just a call for a public hearing?
Just a call for public hearing.
I'll move that.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Erie Boulevard supplemental agreement number four. Mr. Wallen, just in the nick of time.
I have learned to watch. This is for my office on TV, and it makes me efficient. What you have in front of you is supplemental agreement number four for the Erie Boulevard project. What this is at this point is a correction. 2012, before I started, we entered into a supplemental agreement number three with Bub Harbor. You have that in front of you here. The supplemental agreement number three was for construction inspection, office home support, and design. However, we agreed for that, and we sent it off. When it went to the state, they left off the design. So we made an agreement with our consultant to pay them $1.4 million. However, when the state came back with their supplemental A, which I've shown here, which is the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth page, says on the top, Schedule A 1757, supplemental A. If you look at pin number 1, 2, 3, the amount did not change. It was just kind of a miss. So this is, since the project is in a lull right now while we're wrapping it up, this is to kind of close the loophole on this and add the agreement, which you see here. And if you will look at this page, number 1, 2, 3, the amount has gone from 330 to 534. So this will allow us to require reimbursement from the state for the $204,000 of design.
Questions?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, towing contracts. Mr. Salvone?
I believe in the packet, there was a copy of the 2014 proposed towing contract. We propose those to continue similarly to how we've operated in the past, which is that the police department would enter into contracts through the mayor with any qualified companies, as qualified based on this agreement. We've ensured that there's language that does not allow companies to operate if they are delinquent in their property tax or if their landlord is delinquent in their property tax. It's got the new rate structure in here that was approved by the city council last year with the city's administrative fee. And one of the reasons why it took a while to get that into place was it's got the procedure in there with finance. We met with Tony Ferrari on this in the police department to ensure that we would have the proper records going from the towing company to the police department to finance to ensure that there was proper accounting. There are penalties in here for failure for those proper documents being submitted. The first time that they're not submitted, there's, I believe, a 10-day, they have a 10-day to have the documents in at the first of the month, but they have a 10-day leeway period. If it's not there by the 10th day, the first violation, they can't, they cease operation until such time as they get the paperwork filed. The second time, they don't get to operate for five days after they get the paperwork filed. The third time, it's up to the discretion of the police chief, but not less than five days after it's filed, and no more than a year after it's filed. So basically, it would be dependent upon the number of companies we're contracting with. They need flexibility to ensure that we don't issue such a harsh penalty that we end up with the inability to get cars towed in snow situations. There's a requirement in here that all companies towing have a lot in the city of Schenectady. We have, because we've met with and discussed this contract with companies who have proposed an interest in doing the work who don't currently have a lot in the city. They are permitted to enter into the agreement, and they are permitted to be used in the case of snow removal situations, you know, in priority street situations. But they can only operate without a lot in the city of Schenectady for 60 days, at which point they either cease operation in the city or they have purchased, or leased a lot within the city. So it gives some flexibility to the police department, and it gives flexibility to a business if they're able to start operation, but they have to be understanding that they will be moving into the city or they will not be able to tow anymore.
Do we need to include in here the clause of if a person is injured in an automobile accident, $35 to notify to them? In the towing fee section, or is that...
That's all within the statute. Yeah, I mean, if you'd like, we can clarify that in the contract, but the law prohibits it from being charged, so it wouldn't be allowed. When we provide them the list of things that they can charge on our behalf, there would be a schedule, and that would obviously not be on it.
Okay. I don't know that it would be a bad thing to clarify in going into a business contract. As a business owner, I would want more clarification than less, so that if I failed in that case and the city came back to me, it wasn't as a price to me. It just seems like for a small addition, it's a courtesy of the business owner. Any other questions? John?
Just for clarification, for those oversized vehicles. What do you mean, classification of the company's size vehicle?
It would be a vehicle that cannot be towed using traditional methods, using a regular flatbed, using a regular tow truck. So for example, if you had a, you know, a tractor trailer that required special equipment. And prior to such methods being used, and prior to a higher fee being charged, they would need permission from the police department to do that. And obviously, there would be no additional fee for the city, merely the fees that would be associated with bringing in special equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Regarding the, you said that there's some companies outside the city that would be interested in doing this. So with regard to anybody who hasn't paid the property tax or the landlord hasn't paid it, how do we address that for a company that's outside of Schenectady?
In the contract, it says that they are, that they have to be current on their taxes to the municipality, or anyone else that they owe taxes to, which conceivably means that if they're in the town of Glenville, they have to be current on their town of Glenville taxes. Conceivably, that also means that if they owe taxes in the city of Schenectady, not to the city, but to ATF, conceivably, that would be considered a not being current on their taxes. So it's covered, that if they're delinquent in taxes anywhere, they're prohibited from doing this work. Unless it's a snow emergency situation, at which point, and it's a threat to the public, and we do not have enough tow trucks from the various companies that we usually contract with, then the police chief has the authority in that limited situation to bring in a company like that for that, you know, that day or the length of the emergency. It's, you know, ensuring that we're only operating with people that are upstanding people. But on the other hand, ensuring that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we have an unsafe condition in the city. Because at the end of the day, the most important thing is ensuring that ambulances and fire trucks can get from one end of the city to the other.
So essentially, what you're saying is before that we contracted them, if they're from a different municipality, we would check that? We would know it's connected, we would check that?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Mary?
This contract delegates everything to the police chief. There are situations, standing orders, where the fire chief actually becomes the incident commander. There might be situations where the fire chief would be running the scene and not the police chief.
We can certainly add that.
We can add.
Section 4.
Can we use the term incident commander? For those applies to...
I think, I think the issue with that is, I'm not 100% certain, but I believe the legislation authorizes the police department to make the decision. I'm not sure that the legislation permits the fire department from having that authority. And I believe the other thing is, in here, the decision, the authority is with the police chief or his designee. So I would imagine that if you had a situation where the fire chief was the incident commander, then the fire chief would theoretically be deemed the police chief's designee. If the police chief no longer has the authority of the scene or the incident. What if we changed it, chief of police, to the commissioner of public safety or his designee, at which point then it could go to either the chief of police or the fire chief, depending on?
Do that, it just references the ability of the fire chief to...
How about in section 4, it's a, in a situation in which the, in an incident in which the fire chief is the incident commander, the fire chief shall have the same authority as the police chief? Or something similar to that?
Could be, something, again, you have fire, general states of emergency, and the fire chief is making those frontline decisions as opposed to the police chief.
Other questions or comments? Motion?
Motion to amend.
Ending those two changes?
Yes.
Adding the accident tow and the fire chief.
That's correct.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business to come before government operations? Ask for motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call to order health recreation. Mr. Wallen?
Good evening again. This is a call for public hearing to amend Chapter 165, municipal golf course. What we're looking to do is change Chapter 165 to include a more comprehensive breakdown of Section 165.3, possibly also amending Section, no, Section 165.3. When we went through this, it was right before the time when we started getting into passing things via resolution from time to time. And in looking through this, given the city's involvement with lessons and with new memberships, there is some parts lacking from this fee established. And what we'd like to do is change this from a 165.3 to have it similarly match what we've been doing, which is change it to pass by resolution from time to time so we could better mirror what we've been doing and have a little bit simpler chance to be able to modify these as we see fit with regards to lessons and fee structures and things like that. So we want to make it a little bit more comprehensive. I am working right now on the fee structure. As you see, it's multiple pages. It's a little bit more detailed and involved. You will have that available before you acquire time. But right now, I'm just a call to public hearing.
Any question?
Just one comment. We had talked a while back about making the, making the benefit of being a resident a little sweeter, right, than people coming in as a non-resident. And I know that you've done some adjustments to non-residents' rates, but, you know, I would like to see our residents have a little bit more of an advantage. There's like a $2 advantage in one thing, you know, and make it a little more competitive for the sake of our other golf courses and our other golf course in Schenectady also. Just a consideration.
And, well, I appreciate that. I guess what I would like is, I can present what we have here, which is what I just, you know, it's kind of what we have with the more comprehensive breakdown, including the lessons, including the memberships. And then, I mean, if it's an appropriate place for public hearing, then we can go through that and hash out if we want to make any further adjustments.
Just a little history. I'm not sure whether you were here or not. But the other golf courses in Schenectady received quite an increase in their water bill from the city. And, you know, at the time, part of the difficulty of that was also the fact that the muni course was so much less expensive to even non-residents coming in. And I just think that, you know, in respect, again, of business in our city, being competitive and such, and also giving an advantage to our residents who, you know, more or less support the course and, you know, keep it going. So just maybe look into the rates at Stadium before we set our non-resident rates. Now, I'm not saying we have to come all the way up, but I think the benefit is twofold. Now, I'm not saying we have to come all the way up, but I think the benefit is twofold. I think we're creating a competitive business market and also giving added benefit to the residents that live here.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before we move on to the other actions? Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
It's not entertaining, the motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Where to go?
Call to order, public safety. Call for PH regarding proposal legislate prohibiting sale of single cigarettes.
I had asked that this be drawn up. We've had our initial meeting with the corner stores, some of the initial research, and there's ten of them, particularly over the last two years. Those ten stores, ten establishments, have generated just under 3,500 calls for service from the police department and fire department. I would call the discussions cordial, and the attitude is constructive. I've seen that before where it hasn't quite worked out that way, but moving down that path. One of the things that they do is they sell single cigarettes. They acknowledge that they sell them. It's technically illegal. It's the thing at the state level. They don't have the resources to come into a community to go after somebody who is selling a single cigarette. I would like that authority to be given to our police departments, so in fact, it becomes part of our ability to deal with some of these things if they don't take the constructive action on their own, that we'll be able to enforce some of it and ask the council to consider adopting this, so that we would have that on the books and be enforceable by the police department in Schenectady.
I would love to move that.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion authorizing authority to issue tickets for snow-related violation. Mr. Olson?
The, this has been an issue that has been around for a while. It comes up generally speaking every winter, seasonal issue. Seasonal issue. People plowing or snowblowing, snow into the streets, or blocking pedestrian entrances to sidewalks, or handicap entrances to the sidewalks with the snow, or not cleaning their sidewalks, a number of issues with the snow removal. The problem that exists is when we have the storms and the accumulation of the snow, the police are pretty busy with a number of issues, and oftentimes, the issues with respect to these code provisions are low on the list of priorities with respect to their enforcement activities. Carl Falatiko, actually starting in January of '12, had indicated that the people in code department or SNAP could issue the tickets and that my office would deal with the legal ramifications. Carl Olson, who is out tonight overseeing snow removal issues, is not necessarily happy with that procedure because of potential confrontational issues with property owners and/or potential lack of training with respect to either taking statements or issuing the appearance tickets for those violations. So we've got a situation, right now, the code specifically authorizes the police department to be the entity to issue the tickets, and it's, code and staff and so on are out there dealing with the snow removal issues. They're the ones that often see the problems, but the police are not always available to issue the tickets. And this is something where a number of the parties wanted to bring the issue to the attention of the council and seek their thoughts with respect to who should be doing what with respect to issuing tickets for the violations of our provisions with respect to snow removal. And I would add that Mr. Winkler, who is here this evening, has been party to probably more conversations concerning this issue than I have. So I would say that you've been submitting questions to either me or Mr. Winkler.
Any question?
Mr. Thorne and I were talking about this earlier today. I mean, is it possible that the SNAP crew or whoever, if they see it, could just take a picture of it and then bring it back, and then somebody from the city could then, you know, do a fine, fine them or?
Something similar to the garbage, garbage violation, where they would take pictures of it?
I don't have a problem with that procedure. I know you had some...
That if the folks who are actually doing the snow removal and see this happening, rather than, you know, confront the person or do anything, just simply take a picture of what they observe and have the appropriate address, so that then if they come back with this, it could then, someone in the city, whether it's the law department, could then send out a fine.
Carl's quite concerned about that, about his people being in predicament of confrontation with other people. So, yeah, it could be, I think, John and I talked about it, but it could be sent to property owner with the evidence and not involve discussion with anybody. You know, you got a picture and citation.
I think you're doing the same for the garbage and violation, where they take a picture and then they will send a violation.
Parking would...
Without any confrontation.
I agree that it's not optimal to have SNAP people actually writing violations. That concerns me, too. However, on the flip side of that, Mr. Olson repeatedly shows and expresses frustration in how much the citizens, you know, the citizens of the city are working against snow removal by shoveling into the, I mean, two of my neighbors do it, so shoveling into the street or snow blowing into the street or whatever the case may be. So we have to find some kind of half immediate, because if we rely strictly on police patrol, it's going to not be effective. And we have bodies out in the community that recognize what's going on. So, I mean, I think it's really important to protect the people that work for the city and make sure we can find a non-volatile way to make these reportings, but I don't want to see that alleviated completely. I mean, if legally we can take a picture, they take them at traffic lights, right, and then just send your ticket to you, so.
Mr. Thorne?
Is the police department have issued any summonses at all for these violations?
Have they?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I mean, that's the question.
They have. They're not a lot. Most of them have been the ticket cars that are parked violation of the priority street section. It's what consumes most of their time, where they're been working with the plowing crews.
I mean, if they observe an obvious violation, somebody snowblowing in the street or plowing across the street or things like that, they would issue a ticket, is what I'm gonna assume, right?
Okay. Couple of questions, actually. First of all, at what point after snow did these violations get started being issued? Would be one question. Secondly, there are times when people plow, snowblows, whatever, in front of their house, and the city plow, doing their job, come along and plow, and the snow gets back on the sidewalk. So I think we have to consider all of those things. It's happened to me. I just, you know, get somewhere out there to do it again. So, you know, we could be caught in some kind of interesting situations, where someone has plowed, then they start taking pictures, saying, you know, I did my snow, and now, you know, the city's putting it back. And also with elderly, you know, so it's a lot to consider when we start issuing tickets to people, I think, for snow-related violations, because snow is such a movable thing.
Well, I'm pretty sure there should be, I mean, 24 hours waiting time before the ticket can start, get issued. I'm assuming that some sort of a timeframe.
I just would like to know what the timeframe is.
Well, okay, in terms of having something clear, clear to work with, right? But if you see somebody snowblowing and that, that's an immediate issue. Car being parked in a priority street, that's an immediate issue. So, you know, it depends on what it is. The discretion that you're talking about is there automatically with the way the system works. You've got the party that is issuing the ticket, they can say, you know, okay, this is, you know, an elderly person or couple that are here, and if they say, yeah, we're trying to get somebody here, and they'll be here in a few hours, okay, you know, they can say, I'll come back and see if it's taken care of. If it's something where they've issued the ticket, then there's discretion on the part of my office, and there is also discretion by the judge. So there are three levels at a minimum of discretion as to how somebody is treated as a result of one of these violations. And those things are always taken into account. But having said that, it still goes back to the original question, and, you know, taking pictures, I don't know what requirements that would mean in terms of potentially having five cameras. I don't know if any of the people that are out there have city-issued cell phones, if they can be used. I don't know what the, you know, logistically, I don't know what is in place for that. I would be satisfied with that, we would be able to make the arrangements somehow to accommodate that procedure.
So let me just clarify, because we talked about first taking pictures and not engaging people who live wherever this place is, but you then you just said that, you know, it was an elderly person, then who said that somebody will be here in three hours, so therefore you had to have engaged them in order to find that information out, so.
But if they're elderly people, and they, once everything is mailed to them, then, you know, at that point, the discretion that's exercised by my office would come into play and/or the court would come into play.
One other thought, too, Mr. Thorne just pointed out, you know, there's also, we're also dealing with commercial plowers who are plowing larger lots and things like that, so, you know, you wouldn't be just with a property owner.
So that becomes probably taking a picture. You don't know, you can get like a license plate, but you don't know who's driving.
Right.
The truck. This could be borrowing my truck, and you get the wrong one, so it has...
Yeah.
So, you know, who's really the underlying person in control of it is the property owner. They should be studying the terms and conditions to the contract.
That is true. And it's a problem in our city, you know, where you see that with all the sidewalks that, you know, they're not plowed, their lots dumped away, but it's still to be plowed. And it's a problem.
Is there a way to separate out the, you know, snow plowing into the street and blowing snow into the street versus, you know, I'm just, my only thought is, the city owns so many properties right now, are we keeping up with all of our properties to be issuing, you know, citations to other property owners? But, you know, the real issue is...
One weekend, we went 400 and some properties, I think they cleared.
That's fine, just a point, just a point for discussion, because I think it's an important one. I'm not opposed to, you know, making people accountable. If you own a home, that's kind of the cost of owning a home, but, you know, just something for consideration.
Well, these, if I'm not wrong, these laws are already in place. We're talking about enforcement, right? So either we do away with the laws or we enforce the laws. That's, I think, in my mind, is fairly simple. Who's gonna enforce them is what the question's coming in.
Well, yes. The first part of the chain is getting a ticket issued, and, you know, you've got the police that are oftentimes busy doing other things, and you've got the SNAP or the road crews that aren't really trained and not prepared to be dealing with, you know, people. It's what do you want to do to accomplish this?
I guess I personally like the idea of letting the staff take a picture and bring it back and send out a violation.
I don't think the SNAP crew should be issuing tickets. I don't think it's safe for them and...
I mean, something similar to the garbage violation, they would snap the picture and bring it back to the office and then issue the ticket and then mail it and then paste it on the door. Something similar to that would, I mean, I think would work.
That may be easier if somebody doesn't clear their sidewalk. That's obvious. You take a picture, the sidewalk isn't cleared, maybe with a date on it, if it could be date stamped. If somebody blowing snow in the street, take a picture while the snow's in midair and it's in the street. Some people blow the snow in the street, then blow it back on their bank, because that's the way to do it. So if somebody in violation by blowing it in the street and then moving the curb back, I do that. I do that in a regular pace, then I go along the curb and blow it back on the bank, because it's just the way to do it, so you can get the banks with snowy at this year. So it's, that's a tough one. The plowing across the street's another issue. That's obvious. You can see the tracks, you can see where the banks are. I know I have complaints about Eleanor Street, it's closed right up, because a person with a business there plows the snow across the street. We've several complaints about it, nothing's happened, but that street's narrow right now. As you know, on Forest Road, the fire department had a problem today because the street was too narrow. Basically, most of our side streets right now are virtually one-way streets. You can't, traffic cannot go two ways on most of our side streets right now. And if we get more snow, I don't want to think about it, because it's becoming an issue, because traffic can't flow both ways. It's impossible, streets are too narrow.
Any more questions or concerns? So I guess the bottom line is, go with, to whatever extent possible, photographs? Is that what I'm hearing?
You know, and probably for the very, more the blatant, very obvious ones, you know, in case if it's questionable, and Mr. Reedy makes a point.
And I know we discussed this, and I think that there needs to be a specific, spelled-out process of how this works, so, you know, that everyone that's going to be taking pictures and all that, making sure that, you know, we know what the process is, everyone that's going to be subject to possibly getting this violation knows what the process is. As, you know, as I brought up, you know, when someone clears their sidewalk, as many people do, and then gets pushed back on by a plow, whether it be somebody who came to plow somebody next door or whatever it is, you know, the picture could have been taken at that time. So I think that we need to make sure that we're getting an accurate picture of what's being done to your home or business.
And use appropriate and indiscretion. I would put it in that word.
Okay, so, well, you draw something up or write something up, and then we'll review it again in two weeks.
There were no tickets issued in the last storm by the police department. And then somebody issued before the last storm, no more issue.
I know, I've heard that they passed the ball a couple times, that they get one of the right tickets, that's why I brought that up. the right tickets, that's why I brought that up. They want your services to write tickets, or call enforcement to write tickets, which I don't think it would be their job either, they shouldn't be at risk. Even taking a picture could put them at risk. Somebody could say, hey, what are you doing? Why are you taking a picture of me? So, I don't know. In a perfect world, we'd have the police department enforcing this, that's what I would say, that's my thought.
All right.
Any other businesses before public safety?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call to our claims. First thing I'm gonna bring up is, before we go into executive session, is the number three, asking for council support for a bill from Farley and Kasich to amend the education law in relation to authorize the option of assigning community service as an alternative to suspension of students when they misbehave. And I think it's a good idea, I think it's something we should support, especially with some of the problems we had with Schenectady schools, so I'd love to see the council support this.
I would agree.
Any discussion?
No, I think it's a good, good move, too, so I will move it.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if the rest of the items are, we're executive session.
Yes.
All right, I'll move we go into...
Change your order, but yes.
Okay, I'll move we go into executive session.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session.